The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen only mode.
Sorry for the interruption. We are now live and everyone has got the agenda before them. The first item of business tonight is Resolution Number Eight.
Yeah, yeah, here, hold on a second.
All right, we're gonna have to restart, ladies and gentlemen. There was a problem with the piece and I will restart the meeting so that we can make sure we have everything on the recording. So I will go back and again, welcome everyone to the April 6, 2020 Special City Council Meeting, which was starting at 6:30. For the purpose of the roll call, Ms. Parker, would you repeat the roll call, please?
I will, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Atchison.
Here.
Counselor Demott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
And Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Let the record indicate that all members of the council are present. We will be joined throughout the call tonight from the city staff as it becomes apparent on the highness that they're here to present information on tonight. Our first item of business tonight is the Resolution Number Eight. I will turn to Counselor Sights, you're in first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number Eight authorizing the mayor to execute the proposed agreement between the City of Westminster and the Westminster Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 2889, along with the proposed 2021-2022 Fire Commissioned Pay Plan effective January 4, 2021 through January 2, 2023.
Mr. Demott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council at this point? Otherwise, I'm gonna turn to Mr. Tripp and staff to give us an update and then I will come back to council for further comments. Mr. Tripp, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the council packet, which is published on the city's website, for those that are listening to this telecast, is the result of a lot of hard work and very dedicated work by our human resources staff, our fire department administration, members of the city manager's office and city attorney's office, and especially the local International Association of Firefighters 2889, who over the course of the last several weeks, per the city ordinance, have come to terms on a collective bargaining agreement for years 2021 and 2022. I will give way to our Human Resources Director Dee Martin, who has led the team through this and Dee is available to answer questions you might have about the terms of the agreement. So people listening know, the city staff has had several conversations with the city council previously and received direction from the council along the way of negotiation and we have an agreement as consequence of that input and the good work on both labor and management side related to fire.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tripp. This is Dee Martin and I just, first of all, want to say a huge expression of gratitude to council for the support of our process with IBB in collective bargaining. I also want to say a huge thank you to both the employer side, the city side, as well as our local. I believe Eric Burke also has some words, as well as perhaps Doug Hall, our chief of our fire department.
Thank you, Dee. This is Eric Burke, Deputy Chief of the Westminster Fire Department. Mayor and members of city council, on behalf of the entire organization, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to review this proposed collective bargaining agreement and for your consideration for approval. This contract is a product of our strong relationship with local 2889 members in our negotiating process, which is built on trust, transparency, and collaboration. City staff and local 289 members devoted significant time conducting research and identifying solutions to common goals. This contract reflects our collaborative process and we believe it reflects the common interests of the City of Westminster, the fire department, and local 289. We are here to answer any questions that you may have, but I would first like to introduce Ron Taylor, President of Local 289, and provide him with the opportunity to add any comments.
Lieutenant Taylor, if you would, please. Were we able to get Ron up? Yes, we can. Go ahead, Lieutenant.
Okay, so it took a while to unmute. It's a pleasure to be able to talk to you, Mayor and city council, especially tonight with everything going on in the world, to be creative and find a way, a solution, to be able to communicate through amidst all this is pretty amazing. Well, thank you for your time. I just wanna bark on a few work sentiments that this is a problem solving forum and that to sit down with the city and discuss our issues, discuss our problems, and to be able to problem solve in the way that we did is truly an amazing experience that I wish everyone could sit in a room and truly watch because it brings my firefighters closer. They grow more admiration for our city as this process goes along and the trust and the morale in this fire department has never been stronger and as President of the Union, it sure makes my job easy. So the fire administration, the city administration, the city council, I couldn't be more pleased with the entire process and just want a huge thank you to everybody.
Ron, we appreciate all the work you guys are doing on this. Let me go back to Chief Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be brief. Just wanted to extend my heartfelt thanks to you, Mayor, and the city council for your ongoing support and then to call special attention to the leadership of our Human Resources Director Dee Martin, Deputy Fire Chief Eric Burke, and the local 2889 President, Lieutenant Ron Taylor, for their leadership during this process. We are a better organization for the efforts that they put forth and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Tripp, you have anyone else like to make any comments from staff or if not, I'll go back to council.
No, sir.
All right, council, is there anyone who has any comments on this item?
Uh.
Miss Sights.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say thank you to all parties involved. Obviously, thank you to our chief, thank you to HR, thank you to our firefighters who put themselves in harm's way for our residents every single day. Thank you to management and thank you to our community who let us know that this is how you wanted us to help support your firefighters, make sure we were meeting their needs. So I have to say, when I first, when this first began, we started with the interest-based bargaining approach and it has proven to be successful and I do think that is because we have an amazing chief, we have an amazing team of firefighters, and we have dedicated members of staff that are always looking out for our community first and foremost. Thanks.
Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just real briefly wanted to also give kudos to both the local and the fire department on a job well done. I know that, you know, these kind of negotiations aren't always as smooth as they've been. This is the second one that I've been part of voting on and so I just really appreciate that we see a continued good partnership between those two different organizations.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I also wanted to echo what Mayor Pro Tem Sights and Counselor Demott has said. I've been through CBA agreements myself and they can be very challenging and I'm very, very impressed with how fast and how quickly this has went and just, just amazing for both parties, all parties really, but just a quick shout out. It's trying times right now, so thank you for first responders, firefighters included, to be continual in the safety of all of our residents. So I just wanted to do a big shout out for that. So thank you.
Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I could add any more to the sentiment. I just also wanted to add my thank you. Again, very impressed. I loved what she said about, I loved what Ron said about bringing people closer and increasing the morale. That is not an easy task to do, especially in times of negotiation and in very stressful times as we are in right now with COVID. So thank you, thank you for all your hard work and your impressive results.
Other members of council have any comments they'd like to make at this time? Ron, to you and your team, we appreciate the sitting down, the collaboration that we have here with the city. We appreciate everything our HR department, our executive leadership team has done. Many of us have been through these kind of agreements and they've never been as friendly as this IBB process and this is the second one we've done. So Ron, please pass on a job well done to your entire negotiating team and to the members of your union. We appreciate very much what you guys do on a daily basis. If there are no other comments at this time, I will ask the city clerk to take a roll call. Ms. Parker, if you will, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the roll call vote on Resolution Number Eight, adopting the proposed 2021-2022 firefighter collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2889. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Smith votes yes. Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Bowles votes yes.
Thank you, council. This motion now passes on a seven to zero vote. We are pleased to move on to the next item. And again, congratulations to all those involved in the process of what we were doing. So thank you very much. Next item up is Council's Bill Number Nine as an emergency ordinance. And Ms. Scully, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number Nine as an emergency ordinance amending the 2020 budgets of the General Fund and General Reserve Fund and authorizing the supplemental appropriation from the 2020 estimated revenue in the funds for the purpose of establishing an emergency mitigation small business assistance program.
Mr. Demott.
Second.
Hey, I have a motion and a second at this time. Is there any information that we need to have from staff, Mr. Tripp?
You know, I don't believe so. I'll just say that John Hall, Economic Development Director, Jody Andrews, Deputy City Manager, are here to lead, answering any questions you may have about this. I just want to express my gratitude and admiration to John, particularly in his crew, to pull something off really quickly here that is, in our estimation, is recommended to you, a necessary immediate support for small business in the era of COVID-19 and its impact on those small businesses.
With that said, I'll turn to council if there's any questions that you'd like to ask in regards to Resolution, Council's Bill Number Nine. I'll start with Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually did have a few questions that I had sent in earlier today, but I wanted to get them on the record with the answers. So I'll kind of run through them quickly and then I'll let you guys decide who needs to answer. So the things I'm kind of curious about as I look at this, and first off, thanks for all the quick work on coming up with something for our business community. It's obviously very important in these times, but I'm curious if this goes on for, you know, an extended amount of time and from what I just read, it seems like the governor is saying stay at home now until the 24th, I think, and probably reevaluate at that point. But with that being said, have we thought into what, what happens if this goes on longer than what we're thinking right now? And on top of that, you know, what does this, after we're done with this, what do our reserves look like if this passes? And in light of that, you know, kind of if we do go longer than a couple of months, do we have any thoughts around that yet?
I think the first part of that question, Counselor Demott, is probably best handled by John Hall and then I'll ask Larry Doherty to review, refresh again for this audience tonight, the status of our reserves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. This is John Hall, Economic Development Director with the city. Counselor Demott, to the first part of your question regarding what happens should this go on longer, it is our intent to create this program to bridge a short-term emergency gap while federal funds begin to become available to local businesses that will sustain them over a longer period of time. Of course, not having a crystal ball, we don't know with that longer period of time is beyond what we're currently seeing is the 60 days to 90 day window. I think I'll stop there and happy to answer any other questions as best I can.
Oh, that's great. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Counselor Demott. This is Larry Doherty, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy City Manager, and good evening to the public who might be listening to a report on this for the first time. And for more detail, I would just invite those members of the public to listen in to my commentary last week with city council for a few more details, but for the record, as you had asked, Mr. Demott, let me just describe the city's reserves. The city has a stabilization reserve and a general reserve, two different buckets, but the two together add up to $23 million. In addition, the city had a favorable 2019, that is, revenues and expenditures were favorable, which will, which will increase those reserves by an additional $9 million. And on top of that, the city has cash funded capital projects in an amount of $25 million, bringing a total cash on hand available of $57 million. Obviously, we would hope to have those projects completed, but we may defer some of them as needed depending on the depth and the duration of this public health crisis and the financial outcomes related there, too. So on reserve, about $57 million in cash and we've also done some modeling because it's difficult. It's, it's, nobody can know what the depth or the duration of this financial impact will come from the health crisis. We've done some modeling. Obviously, we know which businesses are functioning under this current stay-at-home order and which businesses are essential and what's happening in our Westminster economy on a microeconomic level. We're also taking a look at what's happening on a macroeconomic level across the country and evaluating how that will impact the City of Westminster's finances. And what we've done is look at our sectors. We've looked at the automotive sector, lodging, we've looked at grocery and discount stores and gotten down to a level of detail and then a severity of the impact that suggests that the cost could be a loss of revenue of $30 million. We think it could be higher or lower, but we'll continue to reevaluate that as we get more information because the city's revenue is primarily sales taxes and they're collected in arrears. We won't have information on March's economic sales tax activities until the end of April. We won't have Aprils until the end of May and so on, but we have modeled a very serious decline for April and for May and some openings and some economic activities and recoveries in June and even more of them in July. So you can see, we've, we've made some estimates in terms of the depth and how long this will last and we think that our reserves will exceed that loss, but as you can tell, they'll be reduced by as much as half, but that's what the city has put the reserves on hand for. Those reserves did increase over the last five years by a significant amount and we will, we will be tested through this crisis, but I believe that we have the reserves on hand to maintain a continuity of services to the Westminster community and in addition, have the resources to make a supplemental appropriation to establish emergency mitigation for small businesses. So that I'd be happy to answer any additional questions and I would just remind folks in the audience that there are more details on conversation and report that I gave to council last week. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. You know, I know that you gave a pretty extensive report last week, but I think when we're voting on something like this, I like the details attached to the same night that we're making the vote, you know, especially since we've had a lot of conversation over the last year to two about our position and general fund and, and things that we can and cannot pay for. So I do think that this is the right move for us right now and I appreciate all the work that's went into it, but I also appreciate having the details tonight on the night that we get to vote on this. So thank you very much for your time and effort on this.
Is that all your questions? Mr. Demott.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions. So how did we come up with 1.5 million for assistance? Do we feel like that would be enough for everyone that would apply? And then with the 1.5 million, I'm assuming since the max, max grant of $7,500, I'm just doing quick math, that adds up to about 200 businesses that we could help. So if you could help me understand where we came up with 1.5 million, that'd be great.
Mr. Tripp.
Mr. Tripp. John, please. Mayor, this is John Hall, Economic Development Director. Let me see if I can answer those questions. Let me see if I can answer those questions in sequence. The 1.5 million is really a starting point for us. We, we know it's gonna be at least that to get started on the job of assisting our local businesses until federal funds become more readily available for their support. Do we know the exact amount necessary? We don't. So getting to the question of, is it enough, depends on how long the, the stay-at-home order lasts, how long the critical business operations order stays in place, how many businesses apply. We do expect to be oversubscribed in a relatively short period of time. So we believe this is the right starting point for a 60-day program to assist our small businesses and we'll see where we stand in 60 days. We certainly won't be bashful about coming back to council on a regular basis and reporting on how we think things are going, how our local businesses are doing, and providing additional recommendations should they be required for any additional assistance. In terms of the $7,500, you are correct, at 1.5 million of each business were to take the maximum amount, that would be about 200 businesses. So we are well aware that we're not going to do this alone. This is gonna be in concert with the effort the federal government is putting forth and with the landlords and with the businesses themselves in working together to sustain through this crisis enclosure. Be happy to answer any other questions. Counselor Smith.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, you got a feedback going on.
I think all of us do. I think all of us do. Do we have an idea? Do we have an idea which businesses have allowed? Do you, do we have an idea which businesses are allowed to push rents or are required to pay on time or is there? Has there been a moratorium statewide? Forgive me if I didn't read that, but do we have any kind of idea of which businesses are needing to be pushed and rent?
Counselor Smith, this is John Hall, again, Economic Development Director. I'm not entirely sure I understand the question, but this is a statewide order. All businesses of similar types are affected, generally speaking, in the same way, meaning bars, restaurants, retail operations have had to close or severely curtail their operations. As a general, as a general statement, all businesses are required to pay their rents on time according to their lease agreements. We have encouraged, are encouraging, we hope this program will encourage landlords and tenants to work together where necessary to find alternative arrangements to keep businesses in place and available to open at such a time when the orders are lifted. If that doesn't answer your question, please, please ask again. I'd be happy to try and address it in a more complete fashion.
No, that helps. Thank you. I kind of lost my focus with echoing, but with the, with this grant, two-part questions, is there payback to the city? I'm assuming it's a grant, so it's not, but that's one question. And then the funds can only go to mortgages, leases, and rents, correct?
So this is a grant program. We are not requiring repayment. We believe that adding additional debt to small businesses at this time through a loan program, probably not appropriate. It's also designed to be rather short-term in nature and we have, yes, we are anticipating limiting the use of the funds to rent, rent-related expenses and/or mortgage payments in the case where someone, a small business may own their building.
Thank you. A couple more questions. For those that are forced to close in its entirety, will they receive more than the businesses that are still open, that are partially open?
Ms. Smith, you got a real bad, you got a real bad again.
Thank you, Counselor. No, there would be no difference in the amount of funds that different businesses would be eligible to receive based on their status as open or closed.
Thank you. One more question. What does, when we say that we're gauging the most impacted, what does that mean to us as far as, as far as looking at the criteria of offering these grants?
Thank you, Counselor. That largely relates to the language in the state public health orders, which define critical and non-critical businesses. So some businesses have been forced to shut down operations altogether, some have been allowed to develop a partial operations plan and others have been allowed to stay open completely, so we would target those with the greatest need.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Counsel, if you're not speaking, would you please make sure you're muting your phones as we're getting a lot of feedback? Ms. Seitz, you're next.
Thank you so much. First off, I want to say thank you to staff, specifically John Hall and Larry Dorr for so quickly assessing the needs of our business community and tailoring an approach that they felt had, had the biggest impact on our community. I was wondering, I recognize that they did a good job last week describing why this is their desired approach. But I was wondering if perhaps one of them could kind of go over at a very high level. And I recognize you've answered some of this through Counselor Smith's questioning, how we decided on this sector, what this sector means to our sales tax revenue as a city, and how we use that sales tax revenue for the community. So why this is a good investment with taxpayers' dollars? So that's the first part of my question. If you, if you would indulge us with just kind of a high-level overview.
John?
I'm going to ask Larry Dorr, take this. I think it's in line with some data that he provided in his assessment of the metrics of our, our sales tax revenue. I would just say one thing that hasn't been really emphasized here that is in the council communication is that this is considered an investment, and a return on investment is expected. We're expecting to help some businesses stay operating that would not, not otherwise be operating and paying sales tax in the future. But Larry, would you talk a little bit about your assessment of the importance of the likely recipients of these grants?
Thank you, Mr. Tripp, and thank you, Mayor Protam. Larry Dorr, Chief Financial Officer, once again, speaking. And I'll invite Mr. Hall to make any follow-on comments that he may choose to do. One of the things that I reported to Mayor and Council some time ago is the sector analysis that we've done to try to understand better the Westminster economy. And I mentioned during that discussion that bars and restaurants, which have been closed the longest in our community, make up 15% of the sales tax revenue. And many of those businesses are quite small and have the opportunity to benefit the most from this mitigation program. And we'll be able to measure the sales taxes sustained from keeping these businesses operating into the future. And we expect a return on investment. But there are secondary opportunities for a return as well. And that's related to service businesses who have a workforce that they're employing, and that creates secondary economic prospects for the Westminster community as people stay in jobs and continue to consume and maintain their housing and so forth within the city. So we think there are some direct primary effects, and there are some secondary indirect effects that will achieve this return on investment. One of the things that we hope to do is continue to do some economic modeling around the number of workers that will retain their employment, what their disposable income might be, the sales tax that that generates. But there's a third dimension that we'll attempt to understand, and that is the, the secondary effects from businesses just staying open in certain parts of the Westminster community. So to make that more vivid, as you visit local shopping areas, to the extent that businesses are open and functioning and inviting, creates an upward spiral for those shopping districts and makes, continues to make them robust and vital and interesting and attractive to retail shoppers. We've taken a look at a couple of different sectors, but we think that this one has the most significant immediate opportunity to make an impact in the Westminster community. With that, I'll defer to John Hall for any additional comments, and we can continue on.
Thank you, Larry. I think you've really covered the, the reason why we, we chose this sector. And I appreciate that and be happy to answer any other questions.
Ms. Seitz, you have another question?
Just a statement. So thank you again for this program. I look forward to voting yes for it. I do want folks that are listening to, to really hear that we recognize this is a pain point for one portion of our community, but it does impact all of our community. However, we will be looking at ways that we will assist different populations. And I believe the council will be having a conversation about that later tonight. To, to staff, I would ask, definitely, I, I will be interested in, in seeing how we measure the different business entities that end up taking these grants to see, did they end up keeping their doors open? How effective was this program? So we can continue to make good policy decisions going into the future based off of the data we'll get out of this. So thank you for your hard work, and thank you for supporting our community.
Mr. Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Just a few quick questions. And, but first, I want to thank you for all of your hard work. This is, this happened quickly, and I appreciate that. And the hard work that went into it is very commendable. The federal government's going to be rolling out their stimulus programs in various phases. I know they're six to eight weeks minimum out, is what I've heard. How do we, I guess it's, I don't want to see if someone's eligible for federal grant money. Our money would go farther if we're reaching out to other people who aren't part of that program. Is there any concern on your part that someone might get both a city grant and a federal grant? And then how could we make that not happen? Or do we not, or do we not care?
Counselor Vols, this is John Hall, Economic Development Director. On with me tonight are two of my staff, Jenny Grafton, Division Manager, the Economic Development Department, and Chase Evans, our Real Estate Coordinator, who did the heavy lifting on the program part of this and has really been analyzing those federal programs. So I'm going to ask Chase if he would answer your question, if that's all right?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. To start off with the response to your question, and I apologize, it sounds like I have a feedback as well. I'll try to speak slower to prevent that. You, you mentioned the various federal programs. There's really, the, the federal programs can be really bucketed into three different buckets. The first is the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. It's referred to often as the idle loan. The second is the Payment Protection Program, or PPP, which is part of the CARES Act that was passed the previous week. And then lastly, the Express Bridge Loan, which is referred to as the EBL. The EBL is also administered through the SBA, the Small Business Administration. So with these three programs, with the exception of the idle loan, which does have a, what's called a idle loan advance, the idle loan advance can be, can provide $10,000 to small businesses, which are classified as less than 500 employees. It's, it's stated that, that the $10,000 advance could be provided in as little as three days. That is not likely to happen based on delays that the SBA has been having with their website crashing and various items. However, the, all of the other programs, the Pay, the Payment Protection Program and the actual idle loan itself will take a, a minimum of four to maybe eight weeks to, to receive. So when we're looking at sort of the city's program possibly competing with a federal program, the only federal program that it would be, really be competing with, because we're looking at doing a very short-term sort of bridge program until either the idle loan or the Payment Protection Program can be implemented, is really that idle loan advance. While we have made every effort to craft a program that will serve as a gap and will not necessarily duplicate, because we certainly don't want to duplicate the funds that are provided from the federal government, there is certainly a chance that the idle loan advance, could receive both the idle loan advance and the city's program, if it is approved tonight. However, we don't necessarily see that as a problem. But better yet, the, a company that receives both will both be likely, or will increase the likelihood of, of staying open.
Okay, thank you for that answer. So then my other question is, is this the first time the city's done this type of a program? Is this one of our very first? And then following up on that, if it is, what would we learn from it for future issues like this? For instance, what's our return on investment? How will we gauge that? How will we audit that? What kind of a process do we have come on the back end to see kind of the return on investment of this particular grant program? Learning in the future, you know, if this ever happens again, you know, God forbid, that we would know and, and learn from this process?
Counselor Vols, I'm not certain.
I'm not certain.
I'm not certain whether we've, as a city, had this program before or anything very similar to it. If anybody who's on the line has an answer to that when we get done here with the second part of the question, maybe you'll come on. As to the second part of the question, there is expected to be an ROI. And between our, you know, finance staff and our economic development staff, they'll measure that. And certainly, we'll learn something from this. And over a long period of time, you know, we're going to really see what this $1.5 million investment did for our economy. And we'll evaluate as other needs come down the road here in the next several weeks, all pro, all programs on that basis. When we invest our money, our precious money, do we expect to get a payback to the taxpayer? That's a, that's a primary focus of all these efforts.
To Don's question, Counselor Vols, in my time with the city, I do not recall us ever having done a program like this. And we've never had something like this pandemic that's ever hit the United States during that, since back in the 30s.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for that answer. And then at some point in the future, I, I think Mayor Protam sites maybe touched on this, but I see this as a two-pronged approach. We're helping businesses on the one hand, but then we also have folks on the other hand, and I think sitting kind of Broomfield are doing this, who are renters who may be really living paycheck to paycheck, who also need assistance. We at some point have a conversation, is there any kind of mechanism that we could help people on that end as well? So there's the two-pronged, the business, and then the people who can't pay their rent. And I know that's not really the discussion tonight, but will it be a discussion in the future?
Yes, there's an emphatic yes to that. In fact, we've had staff for several days, if not more than a week, looking at those other segments of the economy they're going to, that are going to suffer here and looking at programmatic options that are available out there. As we move into the next item on the agenda and talk about some questions that all you counselors have had related to those matters, we have some information to provide. It's not complete yet, but I can assure you that John has his staff, led by Jenny, looking very deeply at our folks that have rent due and don't, and aren't working. Hopefully, some of those folks will be put back to work by this, this action that you'll take tonight if you approve this. But I would definitely tell you, you, you've all made it clear to us that you have a lot of concern about that segment of the economy also, and those, and those people and the impacts on their lives.
Mr. Tripp, thank you for that answer. I appreciate that. And I just want to, I don't have any more questions. I just want to say thank you to the team for all the hard work. This is such an important effort you're putting forward, and I really look forward to voting in favor of this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, a, a statement to make too, and thanking staff for coming up with a creative initial solution for this and giving perspective on this too, is that as a small business owner here in Westminster, this, this definitely is a, a bridge situation. While the application for especially the Payroll Protection Program is the shortest thing I've ever seen the federal government put out, their information and connectivity to the banks has been less than what's needed. So even those businesses that are going to qualify for that eight weeks of help, that is going to be some time away. If you can't get an appointment with a banker to talk to them, you can't get them to process an SBA loan. So I see this as a stopgap. It is not something that I would, in ordinary times, even consider being the role of the city. But as we all have said, these are extraordinary times. So I look forward to voting in favor of this measure.
Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And all the other counselors have basically asked the same questions I had. So I appreciate all the thought that went into the question. Thank you, staff, for all the work you've done on this incredible endeavor. I, I know that it doesn't answer all our questions or solve all the problems, but it does take a burden off of a, a certain segment of our community, and I appreciate that. I am very much in favor of this, and I look forward to voting yes tonight on this. And I look forward to hearing the cities. I know the city's working very hard to solve some of the other issues such as rent and homeless impact, and also some of the situations that people may find themselves in with being restricted to staying at home. So I appreciate all the work the city is doing on this. I, I know that it is constant thought and constant work. Thank you.
Are there any last comments or questions from council? This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the roll call vote for Counselors Bill Number Nine, an emergency ordinance for a supplemental appropriation amending the 2020 budgets of the General and General Reserve Funds for the purpose of establishing an emergency mitigation small business assistance program. Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Protam sites?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Aggison?
Yes. With the polling of the entire city council, this motion passes on a vote of seven to nothing. Before I move on to the next piece, let me give you some short updates of stuff that's happening even as we're on this call tonight. Earlier this afternoon, the County of Denver announced under the auspice of Mayor Hancock that they are extending the stay-at-home order for the city and county of Denver till April the 30th. Less than a half hour ago, the governor has now also extended the current April 11th date for stay-at-home to April the 26th with the intent that that may still be extended again. Both of those entities are continuing to evaluate what the impacts are to them. We talked about the funding that we were, were looking at under this program this past Monday. And again, today, I had a webcast with the Westminster Chamber. And specifically last week, we've talked about the SBA Triple P program, Payroll Protection Program. The SBA will be releasing a new program for independent contractors and those who are independently employed as subcontractors or others, for them to start a program somewhat similar to the PPP program. That new SBA program is scheduled to open up Friday of this week, April the 10th. We do not know the contents of it yet, but as soon as we get the information, we'll try to get that out to our small business groups. This afternoon at about 3 o'clock, I received a notice from HUD that they are transmitting notification of the Special Community Development Block Grant Program Funds on is allocate, HUD is allocating to the city of Westminster an amount of $371,728 authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. The CDBG CV funds are to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus pandemics in your community and to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. Now, with any program like this, this doesn't mean it's wide open. So I've asked Jenny Grafton, who is the Division Manager, where the RCDBG funds rely in her group. And I've asked Jenny to be prepared to give us a short overview of what we see within the order that came out late this afternoon. So keep in mind, this is only a few hours old, and we may still have some questions to have to go back to HUD to answer. But Jenny, can you, what's a kind of a high-level overview?
Sure, thank you, thank you, Mayor. So Jenny Grafton, Economic Development Housing Division here. And we have known for probably about two weeks that we could expect some additional funds to come. It was only released late last week what the dollar amount would be. But there have been discussions already between myself and our Adams County staff. Council will recall that we are actually part of a consortium with Adams County and Thornton for our home dollars. We also work very closely with them on our CDBG administration. What we have been advised from HUD is that modifications they have made to date are
What we have been advised from HUD is that modifications they have made to date are largely around changes to process. So for example, in the past where we had to post most things for a 30-day public notice, they've reduced that to five days in order to expedite some movement. There has not been substantial change in the type of projects which are eligible to use CDBG funds on. So they are still really targeting that low-to-moderate-income population. Our early conversations with the Adams County staff have been looking at how we might be able to address more of what we would call the economic development side of serving low-to-moderate-income population. That is an area that typically, because of issues of staff capacity and monitoring that kind of compliance, has been very difficult to do. We think, however, that by possibly pooling our resources and getting some of this additional funding, we might finally be at a critical threshold where we could put that together. So I will certainly keep council updated in the coming week as we flush that out. We are still proposing that we would anticipate using our $2020 that we knew we were getting in much the same way we had already anticipated. The emergency and essential home repair program will be just as critical now to households that are income-challenged to make those modifications to stay in their home. We don't want to take away something valuable like that. But we do think we'll have some additional flexibility in working with our partners.
Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate that.
Yes.
At this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Tripp to move on to the questions that were submitted by council that they wanted to bring forward tonight. Mr. Tripp, let's start with the top of the list that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to just go through some questions. And I apologize if I don't hit everybody's question. And the other thing that I'll say is I'm going to be fairly brief in my explanation because I want to make sure that you get a chance to get the information you really want. So one of the questions that we had was related to water rates. We provided city council and our website with information in the last 10 days or so about our plan for water rates connected to the Water 2025 program and the need that we have to replace infrastructure in our system. We just wanted to be really clear with the council and with the community that we're suspending that conversation in terms of water rate discussion. In other words, water rate increases for 2021 and 2022. I can't ensure you that that's not going to come back and that we won't discuss that further. But of course, that's going to be ultimately your policy decision. I would just say now, I think our Public Works Utilities Director and our deputy city managers and myself felt it was not responsible to even contemplate that right now. In fact, I give the Public Works Utilities Department a lot of credit, and I thank them for, they've actually taken some steps to make sure that people have water service that were suffering and did not have that. And we've made some other changes to our billing and that sort of thing to try to accommodate folks. I just want to assure you that we certainly feel, on behalf of folks, the pain that, you know, that people have in their lives. And as a city, whatever we can do during this time to support them, we're going to attempt to do. Counselor Demott, did that get further to the question that you raised?
Go ahead, Mr. Demott.
Yep, just getting my mute off. It does, and, you know, I'll be honest, I'll apologize first off, I missed the bullet point in the COVID release. So when I saw that, it was on Facebook, and I'll be honest, I was a little frustrated. I think it's got me to read those COVID reports as soon as they come out in pretty good detail. But I would ask for things like that, that potentially those don't get put in the COVID updates. As important as the COVID information is, I don't know how everybody else is, but I am personally inundated with different COVID-related type information that comes to me, be it through my day job, council, and oftentimes, it's, you know, the data as far as like what we're seeing on the grounds and stuff. So I did miss that update, but I do appreciate exactly the sentiment that you're getting at, and I agree with it 100%, and I'm glad that we're putting a hold to that. So that does get to my question.
Okay, I'm glad we did. I do want to tell you that there is so much out there that we are focused on that daily report to you that's not just a COVID-19 situation report, but it's also a summary of other city activities that are going on right now. And I have to just suggest that I do think centralizing that in one publication that you know you can count on coming at a particular time each day that has information that you need is effective. And I'm sorry, that one was missed. I certainly appreciate the fact that we're getting inundated. I had a conversation with my own executive leadership team about, you know, which of those kinds of pieces of information were important for us to focus on. And what I told them was our situation report that we share with you, the communication that we share with you, and then their communication between themselves. So I apologize that you weren't aware of that. And, yeah, we'll think about that moving forward as to how maybe to handle something like that differently.
Well, I think that that makes a lot of sense, Mr. Tripp. I guess what I would ask is if it's something specific around a policy we've been talking about, maybe a extra text to the group or something to make sure that we put extra eyes to it, I guess. But that makes sense. I know that you guys are also inundated trying to get out all this different information. And that's good to know that, you know, that you would prefer to keep that at this point in one daily situation report. But with that being said, if, you know, if we could get an extra on something like that, that's, I mean, that's kind of out of the ordinary, honestly. So if we think that there's going to be other things like that that we need to make sure that we're aware of before it goes public, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. The next couple of items I have are both, they're interrelated, and they're about the Broomfield Bridge to Gap program. That's a program that provides assistance and support for folks that are homeless. And then related to that, concerns that some of you have expressed about evictions, and whether or not the city could have a moratorium on evictions and what our engagement would be with the rental community. I want to make some comments after he's done, but I'm going to turn to CAO Dave Frankel and just ask him to give you a high overview of what our role as a city is in those relationships between the landlord and tenant. And then I'll come back to, you know, the broader question of your policy and any kind of a public statement or position you want to take on these important issues of housing. So Dave, would you mind stepping in?
Not at all. Thanks, Don. Mayor and councilors, to the extent that you're being asked to take a position as to the leases that are in place between landlords and tenants, I think it's important to recognize that our city does not process evictions. Those are run through the state courts. And the city, I do not believe, has the ability to interfere between the relationships between landlords and tenants. I recognize that other cities are taking positions, particularly one came to our attention was taken by Aurora on the 23rd of March. And they've adopted a resolution advocating for certain policies. And that certainly is well within council's authority. If council chooses to propose a resolution for an upcoming hearing, excuse me, council agenda, I'd be happy if I sought out the Aurora document in an editable format so that we could work from their resolution for policy statement that our city council could make publicly. You know, more specifically to landlord-tenant issues, I think it's important to recognize that our city is one of the sponsors of Colorado Legal Services, along with Adams County, Broomfield, City and County, and other municipalities in Adams County. We have funded additional staff time through Colorado Legal Services to serve all residents of Westminster and other local government residents as well in the region. But Colorado Legal Services is open and ready to answer questions that any of our residents may have. And it's important to understand that Colorado Legal Services can be reached through their website, which is coloralegalservices.org. And they have a direct phone number through which they can also answer questions, and that's 303-837-1313.
So thanks.
Yeah, Don, and to the extent that your question also touched on Broomfield, the city and county of Broomfield's program that I understand is available, is making certain rent assistance available. My understanding is that as a county, Broomfield takes more of an active role in providing human services, similar to Adams County and Jefferson County having their own departments of human services. So I think it would be important to evaluate the resources that they can bring as a city and county to what might be described as a human services function.
Thank you, Dave. There's more information that I can provide in terms of our support in the homeless community. Actually, just in the last couple of weeks, our navigator position started and is working within the homeless community to make sure they understand, in a safe way with PTE, to make sure they understand where some of those services are available. But these two questions weren't just from councilors. I believe Sites and Vols asked similar related questions, and Scully. Those are the ones that I can recall right now. They were probably from all of you at one time or the other. So I'll just open maybe with a lead from Counselor Sites, Mayor Pro Tem Sites, excuse me, Anita, because you and I had a lot of conversations about these things. Did we hit answers to your questions at this point? Is there any other kind of discussion you want to have with your colleagues or questions you have with staff?
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you. You did a great job. I really appreciate City Attorney Frankel bringing up the Colorado Legal Services. I would wholeheartedly agree with his recommendation that any residents listening that are currently dealing with some landlord issues to utilize that free resource. When I was part of council that chose to support and to be a sponsor of that program, we did not realize how fortuitous that investment would be. So please rely on that resource. I do want to also talk about that Bridge the Gap program, which is Broomfield. That is not for homeless specifically. That is for people, rent assistance for people specifically who have lost their job due to COVID-19. And I believe they have to have proof that they lost their job due to COVID-19 in order to be eligible. And while I do recognize as a county, they have additional revenue sources and also jurisdiction around health and human services. We, as a city of Westminster, have made it a priority for a number of years to work on affordable housing. And I am terrified as a policymaker that COVID-19 might undermine some of those amazing inroads that we have made. And we've talked really at length as a council about the multiplier negative, I guess divider effect that housing instability has on our community, whether it's sales, tax, revenue, presenteeism at school, all sorts of, a host of society benefits or ills that can be impacted by how secure people's housing are. So as we have stepped up and tailored a solution that really meets the needs of our small businesses, I hope that we will be looking at innovative ways to support residents who have been disproportionately affected by loss of income during this. As far as the Aurora resolution, I recognize full well that we do not have jurisdiction over evictions. But I would like to have some sort of resolution that asks our landlord community, our banking community, to really have some discretion and some grace during this tragedy, which I think COVID-19 is a tragedy, an economic and a human tragedy, but we can come together and support ourselves as a community. So I would ask that my council maybe consider passing a similar resolution with the hope that if enough communities do it, the state will take notice and take action.
That your comments, Ms. Sites.
It is. My last, and this is out of turn, I don't, it's tangential. City Manager Don Tripp did bring up the homeless population. I was made aware of an effort to ask Governor Polis to potentially engage the National Guard to start sheltering for homeless individuals, to mobilize them to assist with that. I don't know if that's something Westminster would like to sign on, asking him to take that action. I recognize I'm giving staff zero notice for them to investigate whether or not that's something that would be appropriate. But we do know that homeless have difficulty with sheltering in place, just by definition, with being able to wash their hands and practice, you know, safe hygiene in order to protect themselves and the greater community from COVID. And that is the end of my question and statement.
So Counselor Sites, I will comment on that, and that's why we're here talking about this tonight. I think we can start conversations. And I think what we'd like to know as a staff is where you as a council are in terms of wanting to push out your opinion on certain policies. What I've heard is related to, something related to Aurora. I looked at their resolution, and their resolution had a couple paragraphs in it that related to asking the banking community financial institutions to honorably work with people. And secondly, you know, to really look at the programs that are out there and try to make sure that we're all helping those programs and supporting those. And then the second thing was here, related to homelessness. I do want to say, just make a comment, that ultimately, the decisions that, as to where we put our resources and where budget is assigned is your call. You know, the charter says that we have a responsibility to kind of bend to the things that we need to do. But homelessness and the management of that, the construction of homeless shelters, the management of an overall program is not something that we're familiar with. And it is, has been a county function. And, you know, if they were to, if someone were to come to us and say, what can we do here in this situation to stand something up through the state or human services, you know, of course, we cooperate and help them. I would just say that it's not something that I think we should take the center of because we're just not, we're not equipped to do that, and we wouldn't be very good at it, I don't think. So I think it starts, though, with where a majority of you want to take this. And if there's something you want to do in the way of a letter or a resolution, you know, if we can get some direction on that, we can bring something back to you.
Thanks, Don. Mr. Vols, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to reiterate what Mayor Perkins Sites said. I think she stated very well some challenges some of our residents are going to be facing. And I think a resolution similar to the one in Aurora, I had a chance to read that recently. I think we should, that's a policy step. And I know we don't have, it doesn't have teeth. We don't necessarily control that, but I still think it does set the right tones. I would support that 110%. I also want to thank Mr. Frankel for a really great job. He did it through emails and then tonight, giving us a good policy perspective on renters and landlords and those issues. So I, as far as, then my final question would be, are those resources, phone numbers, emails, if you're in a situation that's dire, do we have those on our COVID-19 resource page? If not, could we please put it on there?
So noted.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Just to continue with what Mr. Vols was talking about, we did this webcast with the Westminster Chamber last weekend again today. And both of those sessions that we have brought forward, the legal services group, we've given them the contact names and the numbers of the two people that we deal with so that that's publicly out there, and it's on the webcast that was done again today with the Westminster Chamber. But that information is important to get out to as many people as possible. We are aware of some instances where a landlord has filed an eviction notice with the court, which is at the county level. which is at the county level, but the courts are not dealing with those cases at the present time because their closure. But we have notified the county, I spoke to the county administrator, has laid us today, and he's going to pass it on to the courts, that just because somebody files an eviction process start, doesn't mean that the court has ruled that they can evict anyone. And we're trying to make sure to get that information out. I talked about that this morning, that the filing of an eviction notice does not give the landlord the ability to actually evict anyone until a court rules on it. It is still just a filing of a notice to evict. So we need to try to continue to, if anyone gets calls or questions about it, please, the Legal Services Group is the number you need to forward them to. They're handling all of those within the city of Westminster. They're not necessarily sticking to one side of the city or not. Far as I know, they'll take calls from anybody in the city of Westminster for what we are participating with that group in. That's true of other parts of the Adams County side that have other cities that are participating as well. So it's important that we have that information out. I believe it's already been out on the web. We've continued to push it out through the media that we have, that if they have problems, it is not within purview to stop the landlord from filing the process. But right now, the courts are not dealing with it, as we have heard from both the county and state courts, they're not pushing anything through right now. Are there anything else on those two items, Mr. Tripp?
No, I don't, I don't think there are. We'll just await whether or not we've got direction on where to go here with a resolution and/or letter that would support the policy that was put out there.
Let me, let me, let me respond to that one, then. I would ask you to go ahead and prepare one for council to consider, and we'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Thank you. We'll do that. Thank you. Also, a question that was raised by Councillor Sights and then was supported also, but, excuse me.
Can I speak, I hate to interrupt, but before you move on, just because my register didn't get caught there, I have a little bit of input on the letter, if we're going to do a letter, so that it comes back with something that we all can support, hopefully. One of the, I haven't read Aurora's letter, so maybe it would be helpful if that was given to all of council so that we could review that, because I haven't seen it. A couple of thoughts that I have, obviously, we all have a big heart right now as far as, you know, people not being put in a position where they're homeless because of COVID-19. I would say, you know, it's obviously, everybody's kind of focused on that being the priority right now in public safety. That being said, the courts and legal service is there for, you know, good reason, and sometimes people get evicted for, you know, due cause. So I'm just curious, the other portion of that that I want to kind of be clear about is, you know, we do have landlords in the city who, that would be very hard for them to assume that, depending on what the bank did, if, you know, somebody wasn't paying them rent in turn, which they use to pay on a, on a bank note. So I, you know, I would just want to, as much as, like, I think a resolution could be good, and it could, you know, harbor goodwill, I want to keep in mind some of that, that sometimes landlords can't do that, not because they don't want to, because they're not in a position anymore than, you know, somebody is to miss a couple of mortgage payments. So I want to at least put that out there, depending on what it is that you guys draft, so that that's at least a part of the conversation somehow, that, you know, we're, we're doing something that's, you know, recommending and understanding everybody's in a different situation financially.
We'll endeavor to put something together that we can get hold support on here. And we'll send that, the resolution out that Aurora created. So, you know, Chris Lindsay, this will probably fall within his team, Larry and Chris. And so we've got your comments and the other comments that were made by councilors tonight. If anybody has any feedback and wants to send me an email, please do that. And we'll try to get something drafted here in short order with city attorney's approval, and we'll, we'll bring it back. I'm going to go ahead and move on. I think we've got our marching orders here. So the item that Mayor Protem Sights brought up, and again, Councillor Smith mentioned also, is related to our, our public safety officials' safety. I mean, I, I think, and I really appreciate the sentiment that we're hearing from a lot of people, you know, what's being done to make sure that these people who are dealing with emergency medical contact and police contact assisting our community at this time, what are we doing to keep them protected? I just want to, I'm going to turn it to, I mean, what's being done is literally in the hundreds of practices and procedures. But I want to ask both chiefs to give a high level of report to you on this, because I think you'll feel much better about that. Of course, you know, both of them are just terrific leaders, and, and, you know, from the very beginning, we've all, we've all been working together and, and working with emergency management to look at those really important issues. I'm just going to lead by saying, one of the things I'm really happy with is that they're pushing, and leadership from some folks in my office allowed us to decrease the amount of time that we had to wait for a return test, which is a really critical thing, a return test of COVID-19, so we could keep people, you know, employed and not become too taxed that way by losing people to illness or having people sick and having them expose other people. So that, that was a big, great step that's been made. It's not perfect yet, but it's much better than it was a week ago. But with that, maybe Chief, Chief Carlson will start with you, and if you would, maybe just talk at a high level about what is happening in PD to keep our officers safe.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Tripp, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you again. Just at a high level, I will tell you that our morale is very strong. Our people, they know their mission, they're properly equipped, and they're carrying it out every day. And I know that's easy for me to say, but there are some substantial steps that we've taken, not only in, in planning. We've put those plans in place over the past couple of weeks to ensure that we're delivering the right service to the community. But in addition to that, that we're, that we're spacing and making sure that we're doing the right thing by our cops for their own protection. You know, the challenges remain getting enough personal protective equipment, which are, which are those N95 masks, but you know what? That's a challenge. I was on the phone call today with law enforcement agencies from Jeffco. It's a challenge throughout the state, throughout the region, throughout the nation. But as Mr. Tripp mentioned, the issue of testing for first responders is critical. And the city did step in, and I'll reiterate this, I know you may have heard it before, a process through our workers' compensation program that allows us to immediately get in there, talk to a medical professional, and then get a very quick turnaround on, on testing for our folks. So big, big wins for our folks. They're very appreciative, they're very appreciative of it. And so those kinds of, the planning, the steps that the city has taken, the extraordinary steps we're trying to take to ensure that they have the correct PPE, which, for now, we're in good shape. Like all of us, we're kind of waiting to see how long this thing lasts. But in those areas, I'm very, very confident that we have the right people doing the right thing with the right equipment, our folks get what their mission is, and they're carrying it out very well every day. So I'm very pleased with where things are at. Like you, I wish the whole thing was over, but it's not. But we're, we're in good shape moving forward.
Chief Hall?
Thank you. Everything that Chief Carlson said absolutely applies to the fire department. In addition to that, I will tell you that we have instituted some pretty stringent expectations on the part of our people in terms of their social distancing within the stations, in terms of some of the practices we are now implementing with regard to our interface with the public, unless it's an emergency scene. There's minimal public contact now between Westminster Fire and EMS personnel and the public. And they're not necessarily happy about that, but they understand the situation. We are doing medical monitoring every day, twice a day, and logging that information. We're instituting checks with them every day so that we also get feedback from their families. We're still responding to all of those other fire and EMS types of emergencies. They understand what, what their expectations are, they understand what their duty is, and they're, they're standing with this community to take this COVID-19 issue on, and I'm particularly proud of how we're responding to them. And that's all I'll say for right now. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have other, further questions for either one of the chiefs before I turned into a different subject here?
Don, before we change, for the council members who've not had a chance to get through all their emails today, from Cody Urb at 5:19 today is a copy of an email from her to all of council, and in that email is a copy of the Aurora resolution. Ms. Sights, you had a comment?
Just real quick, thank you so much to both of our chiefs and the city manager, Tripp. I appreciate that you have taken, you know, too numerous of steps to describe tonight to, to ensure the safety of our first responders and then also of our community. I did see in the Adams County update that they have secured additional PPE, and that's going to be distributed. Will we, will our first responders be receiving a portion of that?
The reception and inspection approval of PPE is being managed as a part of our EOC, and of course, public safety is a part of the EOC. So, you know, I'm not personally familiar with that, but I'll, I'll be, well, Max is on, is on the call tonight, so I'm sure he's heard that, and we'll pursue that through.
Perfect. And not to be answered tonight, but I was wondering if we ever, if it becomes an issue, if we've started to explore group purchasing to secure that, procure that for, for our officers. But thank you so much for answering the question so detailed.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and move on to the next item.
I'm just making, I'm just kind of cleaning up here. The one item, I guess, that I know is left, but I don't know if there's any others. It looks like this covers it. Options for public comment on land, on land use matters. So all of us have a, have a great concern about how we, you know, continue to conduct business and meet the needs of our community, and also meet our own legal needs related to land use matters, where we're, where we're required to hear certain proceedings, and at the same time be in this meeting format that's less than usual. So I'm going to start by just saying, and then I, and we'll come back to it, that Michelle Parker, who's in charge of these meetings in terms of, you know, this, this sort of technology and public interface, was supported by many others, including IT and many, many others, has put together a very robust plan for how to proceed with public comment that allows us to continue. Before I do that, I'm going to call on City Attorney Frankel, just to, just to describe a bit of the, the challenge that we have in saying yes or saying no to whether these things proceed. We certainly have as a priority right now the affairs of public health and safety, but we do have some requirements in terms of staying open for business and, and meeting legal requirements. And I would also say that to meet the needs of our community proceeding, and that we, we strike that balance. But Dave, if you wouldn't mind, maybe describe how that works, and in terms of our legal requirements for hearing these land use matters.
Absolutely. Thanks, Don. First, I want to thank Ms. Parker for her leadership in, you know, devising the structure for our remote meetings and our ability to conduct these meetings remotely. We strive to protect procedural due process rights of all stakeholders in any kind of land use application hearing. So when an application comes before council, we want to ensure that the public has an opportunity to review both the developer's application, the staff presentation, as well as the packet that's going to council. So if you recall, two Mondays ago, I believe we had two land use items that were brought forward for council's consideration. And the way we planned for that meeting was by including in the agenda packet both the applicant's presentation and the staff presentation as well. And we invited written comments to come from members of the public. Those, the opportunity to provide those written comments went into Monday, the day of the hearings, and I believe even into the evening, we were able to monitor the email boxes that were identified for public comment and testimony on those hearing items. It's by maintaining a record of that, exactly the, the evidence that's considered by city council and the testimony that's provided, that record allows us to sort of ensure that the decisions of the city are defensible and legally sound. So moving forward, we are working closely with Ms. Parker to expand the public's opportunity to be heard in upcoming land use items. And some of the things that we are evaluating are ways of opening a telephone line for citizens to at least record comments, or perhaps to actually provide them, and we're working with IT to divide away, to ensure that public comment testimony is part of the record that's considered by the city council prior to their taking a vote on any application. I think that some of these recent questions have come up because the Planning Commission has upcoming hearings scheduled, and we are working to ensure that there are opportunities for the public to be heard by the Planning Commission as well. So any projects that are under, you know, process at this point, going first to the Planning Commission, would then subsequently be placed onto a future city council agenda. So I just thought it important to identify how these are handled procedurally and the efforts that staff are making to ensure that we have the procedural due process rights of the public and of the applicant addressed adequately.
Mr. Tripp, you have anything you want to add before we open it up for questions?
I don't know. I'll turn to City Clerk Parker, if there's anything she wants to say. I guess I would like to get into giving you folks a chance to, to talk about this.
Thank you, Don. I don't have anything to add at this time, but would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Seymour, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think as we're, we're moving forward, and it's important to protect the due process of all parties, we have to keep in mind, though, too, that as we have adapted quickly to this new format, and there was a very enlightening article in the Denver Post today about other municipalities adopting that and using video interface and trying to also figure out how citizens can continue to participate. We have many of our residents who are normally engaged in the process that are right now engaged in a process of trying to save their family and their home. And that is, that is the more important issue for them. So I think we need to continue to consider how this will affect them from that standpoint, and what the priorities that they have to deal with, rather than submitting comments or being engaged in a land use process. And I ask my, my colleagues to take that under consideration, and, and if we have to make changes from an emergency standpoint regarding that, then we should consider that in near future meetings. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And thank you to staff for trying to, just kind of echoing what Councillor Seymour said, trying to get us all online and operational, and these meetings have went quite well for the many weeks that we've been online. have went uh quite well for the many weeks that we've been online. Um, I have, I have severe concerns um with public land use and public comment. Um, part of my reach for a question on um asking the city clerk, um, Ms. Parker about whether or not we've received public comment um through our online process. Um, it doesn't seem like we have. And from the time that I've been on council, there have always been at least five people or more um that have come to council expressing concern and that's their only time to be able to do that with the council. And so, um, when it comes to land use matters, um, that's even more concerning for people on uh how they um, you know, perceive the application. And so, um, I, I, I don't know if I could support um even making a decision without having a true dialogue with the public on um, on their thoughts. I know it's online and I know that there's um ample time for them to respond. However, I think it takes it outside the traditional um council body to make that decision. And um, and I honestly cannot make a decision without um having full public input. Uh, and I'd rather have it be, it, it's more meaningful to be in person um to have that conversation. Um, I know it's not a two-way conversation, um, but there's so much more that is said in um body language and, and everything else. And so, um, taking that all into account, especially of what we're asked to decide in um the criteria, it's incredibly important to me that all those items um are discussed with the public. Um, so I would encourage my fellow council members to really consider what we're asking the public and what we're deciding on with these land use applications. So, I would encourage us to pause. Um, but um, obviously, I'm one of seven, so thank you for hearing me out.
Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I share some similar concerns as um counselor Smith. A couple of the things that I would bring up is I know from some residents I've heard, um, I've kind of been in this new um situation, temporary situation or whatever you want to call it. Um, in, in particular, like land use hearings, often, you know, people hear questions as they sit through those hearings and hear other people's questions because it's, it's more real time. And I know that, that, that lends itself to a different conversation that obviously we use when we're being the, the judge of these, these hearings. And I think that, you know, that's one of the valuable things that I, I unfortunately, I'm not sure how you replicate that in the current environment without being able to have them uh, the public's voice in real time. Um, some of the other things that I'm concerned about as far as the, the, why I would, you know, have us at least think about pausing any kind of a big land use until we are back at a normal state, um, is, is really is the posting also. And one of the things I was thinking about is even if you do post it, right now, we're asking everybody to stay at home, so they may not even see it. I know that we have other ways that we mail out, but um depending on if the, you know, if they're within the area or not, they may not have the same exposure to, to see what's going on because of the situation that we're in, um, you know, in, in the world today as far as people not really going out. So, um, I, I do share some of the concerns and I have some of my own. Um, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, the right way to address it, but I, I am concerned that we're not going to have the, the, the same kind of collaborative um robust process in the current situation that we're in.
All right. Mr. Demott, I'm going to ask you to pause for a minute. Uh, we've lost part of the council. I'm going to call a short recess while we're trying to get them back on. So, if you would, everyone stay on the system. As soon as we get everybody back up, we'll reconvene the meeting.
Thanks.
And remind everyone, if you're not speaking, please put your phones on mute.
Hello, is anyone there?
Yes, we can hear you now. Counselor Vols, thank you.
I'm back in. It kicked me out and I could not get back in and it would not accept the code. So, I don't know what happened. But I'm, you can hear me now?
Counselor Vols, this is Anita. I was also kept off and not allowed back on. I could hear, but I could not participate.
I couldn't hear. I couldn't participate and I couldn't speak and I, and I was, and I kept saying I was on as a um, not a panelist, but the other thing, attendee. So, I couldn't do anything.
All right, guys. Remember you're on the voice for everybody. Not on a private chat. We have uh two council members, I believe, are both back on. Uh, Ms. Parker, do you show all of council back on the system?
I do. Uh, if you'd like, I can take the quick roll if you'd like to do a test.
Yes, please do.
Mayor Aggison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sykes?
Here.
Counselor Seymour?
Here.
Counselor Scully?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
And Counselor Vols?
Here.
Thank you.
Now that we have everyone back, uh, we were in a comment point. Um, Mr. Demott, if you want to either repeat your comments or continue that, that would be fine.
Sure. I'm not sure where they dropped off, but basically my, to summarize, is I, I just don't think that the public gets the best opportunity to hear things and then develop questions. Neither do we. And then I also had mentioned that the, the posting is a problem for me as far as, you know, people aren't out and about as much because we've asked them to stay at home, which is the right thing for them to do. Um, however, if, you know, they would have otherwise seen a public posting, they may not. Um, so, you know, I am concerned about us moving forward with some of these uh public land things um while we're in this, this si- situation without having more of a, a robust collaborative way for the public to engage in conversation.
Yeah. Ms. Parker, I'm going to go back to yours. Ms. Scully, I'll come back to you in just a second. Uh, one of the things, this, my understanding you're looking at is uh exploring with the IT staff and the other support groups is how do we ensure we can get an engagement from the public? That either could be real-time emails, texts, or a way for them, the public to be talking during the hearings. Now, I'm talking about the planning commission hearing and then eventually into city council. Give us any idea of some of the things you might be looking at. Uh, no decision has been made. You haven't instituted anything yet, but trying to make sure that we can engage the public as much as possible.
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I'd be happy to answer your question. We are currently looking um at three different ways that we can engage the public and also bearing in mind that not all members of the public have access to computers or um, or a, a, an internet connection that is reliable. So, at this time, we're currently considering continuing um allowing uh those who are interested and able to submit testimony in advance to an email box. Um, we are also looking into establishing a voicemail box where folks could leave a recorded message, um, which we would then attempt to aggregate together and play back during the live public hearing. Um, and then we are also looking at a way to have a sign-up through the city clerk's office in which those who would like to add their name to be one of a list of speakers during the live virtual meeting, um, could then add their names um to that list. And we're still working out the details on how we would make that work. Um, but we've, we've made a lot of progress and are anticipating that um if not all of these, then m- much of this will be rolled out in time for the next public hearing, which is scheduled for next Monday, April 13th, um, as well as for the next planning commission meeting on Tuesday, April 14th.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Scully, your comment?
Um, so, I, I understand the um, the frustration with perhaps not having, the public having enough access to the um online platform. I, I guess one of my questions is um for Ms. Parker, could we, could we do a telephone call-in, kind of like we do when we do our town halls? Would that be something we could look at?
We are also looking at that at this time. Um, I, whether or not we can make that technology fit with the current technology, I unfortunately can't answer that on the fly. Um, but IT staff is definitely looking into every way that we could possibly um engage people um live during a meeting. That is the goal.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I thank you for your due diligence on that. Um, the other concern that I have is that I know when we went, when we voted to um put a moratorium on development in the city so that we could look at our sewer system, we talked about how that would impact developers who may be on a timeline due to federal funding that they may be waiting for, applying for. Um, so I have concerns about delaying some of that, um, because we've already delayed them once as a city. I don't know that we'd want to delay them a second time. Um, and if we have a platform, we are in a very interesting time in, in the world where we are having to look at different ways of delivering messages, um, making decisions, considering impact. Um, and online is an option at this point. Many, many people are, are participating in it. I know that for most of us on council, our jobs have all gone to an online situation. I'm just wondering, I guess, what would be the timeline for some of these developers that might be looking, they're on a timeline? I, I, we're risking them losing their funding and, and maybe I don't, I think it's a consideration. I don't know that it's the consideration, but it is a consideration. I just maybe something to consider and explore.
Yeah, Ms. Scully, I've asked the city attorney to address that issue here in a minute when they get through a couple more questions, if you can hold for a minute.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Did you have another comment or question on, other than that one?
I do not, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh, you know, I think um just what happened tonight, if we, um, if we consider going live on with public comments, um, even technology has its own faults. Um, we saw two counselors unfortunately, unfortunately been dropped off. So, I'd be concerned that there might be some, some drop-off in a public comment that might cause some issues. So, that might not be readily accessible um for them to get back on. So, just another comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Vols? Mr. Vols, do you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Um, I was on mute, unfortunately. Um, I also want to express that my, I share people's concern about having public hearings strictly online and over the phone. I, I, I guess I question, I guess there's, if there are developers who have funding issues that are on a tight timeline, I understand that. So, we have to respect that. So, the counselor Scully raised that issue. I think that is a good consideration we do. But I don't like the fact that we wouldn't have uh public participation possibly at the level we should for certain projects. So, I guess I would question, is there a possibility for certain land use issues that there's absolutely, no one should have, we, we don't receive any comment. We didn't get anything online. No one should like, there's just no opposition whatsoever showing up. And we routinely move through those, but the ones where we really have people who are, want to attend a meeting, I, I, I guess I have a lot of heartburn in not allowing them to come to a meeting. So, I, I, I would like to know if there's a possibility to delay some of those if they're controversial issue. I think if there are a way to delay that so people can participate. I guess that's my comment.
We'll, we'll continue to try to answer those for you. Ms. Sykes, you have another comment?
Uh, thank you. Um, so, I actually um think that this is a, i- is a pretty big concern and, and um I appreciate my colleagues addressing it, um, and members of the community addressing it. Um, it, it is a hard nut to crack because we have our own um, you know, ordinances and, and basically procedures that developers have to go through, um, landowners have to go through to navigate our process and, and timelines. And delays do cost some real tangible money. Um, financing, their rates can change, a whole host of things can happen. Um, but the reason that we have any say in this at all as a government entity and, and, and why it's not um billed by right as soon as you purchase property is so that we have the, the fingerprint of the community on land use decisions. And so, um, I really appreciate the effort that city clerk Parker is putting into trying to find a solution that will allow us to have meaningful public engagement. And I think maybe a good standard is, would the applicant settle for that level um of engagement to be proponents of their project? It seems, um, you know, it, it, it seems unbalanced a little to me to allow them to be on the phone, talking about the, the merits of their project, the details of the projects, um, but not have that same level of interaction from the general public. Often, um, over my six years of, of serving in um a quasi judicial capacity during land use matters, I have noticed that the public and the developer, their conversations are iterative. And so, triggering um answers and, and questions from each other, um, and helping us come up with better policy decisions. Um, so I would um strongly um suggest that we find a way that we do allow for that real-time iterative um communication if we are going to proceed with planned u- uh land use rather, um, uh, decisions during this, hearings and decisions during this time. Um, you know, I don't, if there's a controversial land use hearing, um, and the community feels, I, I, I think there's also a perception problem for the community if they felt that they were not allowed a seat at the table um for a development that could impact, you know, the land use decisions are pretty close to permanent. Um, so really wanting to make sure that their voices are heard and weighed um i- i- I think is important. I apologize for the rambling statement. But I, 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 I want to make this clear. I also want to protect the due process that every applicant is deserved um and should be afforded. And so, I don't know how you balance that in a COVID-19 situation. Um, but those are, I guess I, I want to just think out loud that that is where I am at on this topic.
Well, I think one of the things that we're asking the Ms. Parker to do right now is to explore what is the options that we have, uh, present that back to us as soon as possible so we understand how well we can respond to the questions raised by the council. Mr. Frankel, I know uh there's been some conversation about there may be some legal uh entities involved in any of this decision about how we proceed, don't proceed. But I think you've had some conversation with us in the past of some things that we are required by law to do or in this, in a case where we have federal funds involved. I think you made a comment earlier. Can you expand a little bit on that?
Sure. So, the, the, one of the challenges of ensuring the procedural due process rights of all the stakeholders is that we, in a quasi judicial hearing, we consider an application, we consider our criteria in the code, and we apply our and we apply our criteria to the evidence as presented in the hearing. I, I think, you know, obviously we want to facilitate the most public participation that we can. So I think that's why staff is working so hard right now to find ways for public testimony to be received as part of the record that forms the basis of council's decision. As for, you know, delaying any project, it's my understanding that often there are costs associated with delay and financing of projects is, is something that can be jeopardized with delay. So, I think, you know, the option of, of not moving projects through our process could have some significant legal issues we would need to evaluate before making a recommendation that, that council consider, you know, stopping our development process. As, as things stand, you know, our, our development process has been built into the city's code. And when applications come in, they are treated step by step through our process, including, you know, going to the planning commission. The planning commission reviews these applications and makes a recommendation that then gets transmitted to city council for city council's consideration at a later date. So I, I think, you know, that, that would be my, my suggestion is that we have procedures in place that work for all applications. And, you know, to the extent we need to maximize public participation, that, that is set absolutely something that is a goal for city staff.
Mr. Frankel, there's a question for you from Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Frankel, so are you saying that if we were to decide that we, we didn't want to hear this land use at this time due to COVID, that really the step we would have to take would be a, basically a moratorium like we did with the sewer system where we say that we won't listen to any land use until COVID is, till a certain date when COVID is over or we can meet in person? Or would we have to take that kind of a step? Is that what you're saying?
I think that, that would be a, a step for councils to consider. You know, if, if we've had such a concern that we cannot provide procedural due process sufficient to ensure the rights of all the stakeholders, that a moratorium on development applications being processed could be one of those council decisions, yes. But at this time, there is no moratorium on land development applications in our city. As I mentioned two weeks prior, two weeks ago, we were able to successfully consider two separate projects and those projects are moving forward. So, yes, I think the short answer to your question, yes.
I'm going to jump, I'm going to jump in and tell you that it would be my recommendation that we not, we not move to a full moratorium this evening in this conversation, but that we think about, we think about this a lot and we can put together a list of what we think those projects are that are coming forward. City Attorney Frankel, I think if, on an individual project, if the council felt that they hadn't been able to hear all of the testimony that they wanted to hear, couldn't they table that project? They wouldn't necessarily have to move a particular individual project if they weren't comfortable with it, would they?
Correct, Don. I, I think it's just as Counselor Smith pointed out, tonight we had a technical glitch where we lost contact. If something occurred during a meeting where we lost connectivity, we couldn't move forward, people didn't have an opportunity to be heard, I absolutely think that continuing the item to a date where we could have complete participation by all the stakeholders would be appropriate.
And that, that's a, that's a fairly obvious one there, but it could, it could also apply to a matter where they felt the project had enough public concern, discern that they didn't feel comfortable with the mechanisms that were available to them to hear that deliberation. So, in a project like that, they might make that decision too, couldn't they?
I think that, yeah, it would depend upon that, that, how the hearing progressed. But yes, I think that there, there certainly could be a basis to, to continue or, you know, council is always within its discretion to approve, deny, continue an item, send it back to planning commission. There, there are certainly options always available to city council depending on the evidence that's presented in any land use application.
Mr. Frankel, we also have to consider that any of these times that we have an application before us in following due process, that if we were to stop the process, that there is a potential, I believe, based on your earlier comments, that we could institute legal proceedings against the city. Would that also be true?
If I understand your question, Mr. Mayor, it, the evaluation of risk to the city, if, if a project is pending and, I mean, certainly there would be, there could be risk to the city, yes. If, if a project that meets the code criteria as, as written is told that meeting the code criteria is insufficient, I could see some risk to the city, yes.
Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm ki- kind of on that note, I'm just thinking like you, you mentioned the two that we did a couple weeks ago. My understanding were those were both already through a normal planning commission scenario, which from my under recollection didn't have citizen feedback. The other thing I'm thinking as we, as I think through this, you know, we're really in unprecedented times and, you know, one of the most important things I think our system provides is access to, to justice. And, you know, and I bring that up because the courts right now, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, they're in a situation where, where we're not processing things in court to some extent. You know, so under normal circumstances, I understand everything you're saying. We are, however, far beyond normal circumstances right now. So I'm just curious how, you know, how you, Mr. Frankel, you, you'd match that up, understanding, you know, and, and what the risk is and if, if it's at, at a different point than a normal point in time where we're not dealing with these kind of scenarios that nobody, you know, four weeks ago, if you asked me, hey, would you think that the courts and everything else in the world is going to shut down? I'd say no way, but, but here we are.
So, Counselor Demott, yes, that the courts are trying to conduct as much business as possible remotely within our city. We have continued several hearings and we are working to resolve many cases remotely to reduce risk to both citizens and staff of face to face contact in a courtroom. So, yes, absolutely, we're, we're trying to adapt to ensure that the rights of individuals are honored and respected. So, we're not simply saying that people have no access to the courts as, as that example. I think that, you know, to the extent your, your question identifies the extraordinary times we're in, absolutely. And that's, that's one thing motivating staff right now to try to find ways to ensure that everyone's voice is heard as part of the land use application process.
I, I guess I would just follow that up and, and I'm glad to hear that we're doing as much as we can remotely in the courts. But I just, to, to me, unless we absolutely have to move forward with some of these things, I just don't think it's in, I personally don't think it's in the best interest of the city.
Well, right now, as the city manager and Mr. Frankel both pointed out, there are no land use hearings before the council. However, there is the potential of one later this month before the planning commission. But until the city clerk and the group in the city working on this can find a viable means for public comment, I'm not sure that they will schedule that if they can't find a process which is undergoing scrutiny right now. I think for us, we need to give the staff a time to find out if they can come up with a viable process, make sure that we are in compliance with procedures and policy and through legal guidance from Mr. Frankel's office, this should be perceived to move forward or not move forward. But I think council has each made a statement as to where they are, have concerns and we need to give the opportunity to the staff to try to answer as many as they can, which is a process is already underway. Mr. Bowles?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well said. I, I guess that you really could have said what I was going to say, but, or you covered what I was going to say, but I, I would like to see us come down on the side of public testimony transparency. I think we get better projects when the public has access. So, I've said all that, I think Counselor Demott also raised a really good point. Courts are closed right now, so because of the situation and they also have deadlines and parameters, you know, you have to file and attorneys have to do depositions a certain amount of time. Well, it's all been delayed, pushed back. So I think we're quasi judicial, I don't see it's that different, but I, I would like to see us come down on the side of public testimony and public input in these projects. That's my comment, thank you.
All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think we've all had an opportunity at least once or twice to make comments on this. We, we need staff to have some time to put together a proposal of how this might proceed or not proceed forward and then also get buy in from the city attorney's office to make sure we're not setting ourselves up for a bigger problem. With Mr. Tripp, I think that has answered all the questions that were submitted. I think each council member has had a number of opportunities to comment on the items that we were covering tonight. Do you have anything else?
No, just to be really clear on the direction here, I think I have it. One of the steps that's first is to finalize the recommendation on how we meet the requirements of public input. You can take a look at that then and you can determine whether it meets your needs. If it doesn't meet your needs, that, that's, that informs us as to what we can and can't do. I think the other thing that we'll do is a longer term search as to what projects are in the, are in the pipeline that could be impacted by this and if there's, if there's really a difference in any of these, I, I don't know that. We haven't been focused on that in the last six weeks frankly, so we'll do that also and have, and try to have a little better understanding of that. Does that, does that take care of what other, are there, is there information that I can provide for any of you that would help you on this matter that I didn't just, I didn't just describe?
I think, I think looking at what's not happening on the chat comments, I think each council member has presented their opinions. You have that all, and information that's been captured in the recording and we want to try to address each of the comments made by each council member and trying to alleviate as many concerns we have and but also as most everyone has indicated is, we want to make sure we have public involvement. And as you're looking through the process that the clerk is trying to evaluate and you and Mr. Frankel and the senior members of the staff, before we make that decision, have given us something back that gives us some level of assurance that we can meet the needs of the code.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, there is nothing else left on the posted agenda, which is what we need to stick to tonight. Mr. Demott, I'm going to give you one more comment and then we're going to close the meeting.
Sure, I, I just didn't have a good opportunity to ask a question about the CDBG money. But I was just curious and, and if you don't have the answer for this now, you can get back to me, Mr. Tripp. But I'm curious, I know that CDBG typically has a certain amount of money that we're allowed to take for administrative fees. And I'm just curious if this money has that same kind of rule built in? And if so, if that's something that we plan on taking or if we'll be able to try to use the full amount for, for the, you know, for the COVID situation?
Are you talking about the new money or the previous money, Mr. Demott?
The, the new money that was specific for, for the current situation that they mentioned tonight.
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need some time for staff to, because that just came out about four o'clock this afternoon and as Ms. Grafton said, they are, they have now received the information, but they're having to go through it to figure out what we can and can't do with the money and where, where we're restricted. So, in either case.
That's fine. Whenever they get back, I'd like to know that.
Yeah.
We'll do that. I understand.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's approximately eight thirty-five. We've gone through the items that are authorized under our special council meeting for tonight. Each council member has had a number of opportunities to count, to comment. Reminder that next week is our regularly scheduled council meeting and we will be back in next session next Monday. Till that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good night, council.